To order, and if you would, please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Shippers.
Here.
Allenboth.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Focas.
Here.
And at this time, if we could have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I'd go ahead and make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. House Member Allenboth.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Focas.
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward with public comment that you say your name out loud, and then if you would please write your full name and address for the clerk, it would be greatly appreciated, and if you could keep your comments three minutes or less. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from our last meeting, which was held on February 3rd, and also the minutes from our closed session that was held on February 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
House Member Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenboth.
Yes.
Mayor Focas.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
I did this before I left, so that...
Okay, with that approval, it takes us to a couple of appointments we have this evening.
It's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Brian Warner to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term to expire on March 6, 2023.
I'll make that motion to approve the reappointment of Brian Warner to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term expiring March 6, 2023.
I'll second.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenboth.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Focas.
Yes, motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Michelle Carter to the Cadillac Historic Districts Commission for a three-year term to expire on March 20, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Michelle Carter to the Cadillac Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire March 20, 2023.
Second.
House Member Shippers.
Yes.
Allenboth.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Focas.
Yes, motion carries. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Just a friendly reminder as well that when we're talking, we need to speak into our mics, getting feedback that our sound is leaving a little to be desired from those watching at home on TV. These are all very directional, so moving forward, a couple items under the City, a few items under the City Managers' report this evening. First item is a purchase request regarding automated external defibrillators. The city of Cadillac was successful in receiving a grant through the Assistance to Firefighters program. That program is actually a program under the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is under the Department of Homeland Security. So these are federal grant dollars. The city received a grant in an amount of $20,000, issued bids, and our recommendation this evening is to go with Stryker Sales Corporation in an amount of, or maximum amount of, $21,000. Funds are available through the Assistance to Firefighters grant with matching funds of $1,000 available in the general fund. And for transparency purposes, this is the second to the lowest bid that we received, and for reasons as described in the communication this evening, including the durability and our familiarity with the particular product that they sell. It's our recommendation this evening to utilize Stryker and to continue to utilize Stryker for the AED equipment. Also, this will enable us to basically carry an AED device onboard within every unit in our fire fleet. So it's a good opportunity for us to take advantage of all of the funding that we got through the federal process.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to award the purchase of eight AEDs and ancillary supplies to Stryker Sales Corporation for the maximum amount of $21,000.
Support. Councilmember Allenboth.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Focas.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Similar to the item that was just considered and approved, this item also, the recommendation this evening, is for the second to the lowest bid that came in. The item is regarding the purchase of a vehicle for the police department, and in this case, a 2020 four-by-four crew cab pickup truck. Our budget includes an appropriation of $30,000. The recommendation this evening is to go with Galena's Van Dyke Dodge out of Warren, Michigan, for an amount, excuse me, for an amount of $29,163. The difference in the other vehicles that were bid, other than price, of course, include a different model truck. So between the lowest bid and this bid, we're getting much more vehicle for a very little difference in the cost. And as you'll see in the communication, it states that this vehicle is the tradesman's model, which is an upgraded model that includes a longer wheelbase for increased stability and longer box to provide additional storage and hauling space in the bed of the truck. This model is also the most recent, that includes improved technology, body style, and improved safety features and drivability. And just as an aside, we did double-check with our local dealer to see if he had any additional words of wisdom regarding the analysis of the two vehicles that we received, and was basically suggested that we look at getting the tradesman model if that's available. So again, given the relatively small difference in cost from $27,807 to $29,163, our recommendation this evening is to go with Galena's Van Dyke Dodge out of Warren, Michigan.
The police department doesn't have their own truck right now, do they? Okay.
None of the local dealers were involved? They didn't?
The local dealers could be involved, but they're not, and it's because they're not part of the state bidding process. We went through a number of years ago, and I don't recall what the vehicle was exactly, but we had a lot of conversation with the local Ford dealership, and they couldn't touch the price that they're able to get, excuse me, that the other dealers are able to get direct from the manufacturer as a part of being on the state list. So, yeah. Great question, though.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to award the purchase of one truck for the police department to Galena's Van Dyke Dodge in the amount of $29,163.
Support. Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenboth.
Yes.
Mayor Focas.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The next item under the City Managers' report is the agreement with the Cadillac Industrial Fund. If you see before you this evening, there is a copy of a resolution that was approved in 2018, and it was a resolution titled, "Resolution to Support Environmental Cleanup Activities and Create a Renewable Energy Resource for the City of Cadillac at the property commonly known as the Mitchell Bentley property." And as a part of that resolution, if you were to basically skip to the bottom of the second page, it talks about, "In support of the grant application, the city of Cadillac will consider and execute agreements that will be necessary, including but not limited to a potential." And then there's a listing of what those potentials are. And so the very first one talks about the potential property transfer agreement of the property to the Cadillac Industrial Fund. And so while you might be thinking, well, you know, why would we be thinking about doing that? Well, this property has been one that has taken a number of years to essentially evolve to where it is today, where it's looking like it's pretty much a redevelopment-ready site. In fact, it is going to be a redevelopment-ready site. In fact, already, we are going through sort of the final steps in getting the property set for the Consumer Solar Gardens program. That being said, and Sandy, can you pop that one map up? So if you look at the screen, you'll see in the bottom corner, in the very light shade, that's essentially the area that the Consumer Solar Gardens program is going to be. The area in the middle is still going to be available for redevelopment purposes, and the area in the top right is just simply, there is a reference point that that's the former Western Concrete property. The three acres under Western Concrete is not a part of the property that's under the control of the city. But over the last several years, if not for the incredibly close collaboration of the Cadillac Industrial Fund, we wouldn't be at the point where we are today, where this property is basically ready to get redeveloped. And you also have at your table site sort of a listing of all of the different sort of key areas where the Industrial Fund came into helping and getting this site ready to go, along with sort of chronology of the site itself. And so this evening, what we're doing is essentially item A from the resolution. So we never came back after this was approved back in 2018 with essentially the framework that would be necessary to transfer the site. And at this point, I'm not necessarily saying that that site is going to be transferred to the Industrial Fund, but it might, if the time is right. And what this does, if you look at the second page, there's basically seven provisions that outline what that transfer may look like. And in summary, it would be as follows. Essentially, the Industrial Fund would have the right to request the city transfer it to them essentially for a dollar, which this agreement would establish that ability to do. If the Industrial Fund then sells the property, which is certainly what their objective would be, we would then receive a portion of those proceeds at a 10% level. Likewise, if the city happens to sell the property before the property transfers to the Industrial Fund, then the sharing of the proceeds would happen along those same lines. It would be at the 10% level. And that may sound somewhat familiar to members of council because in years past, we have cost-shared the proceeds at that 90%, 10% sharing with lots that the city has under its authority or under its control within the Potfett Industrial Park. This one being the reverse, where the city retains 10% and the Industrial Fund would retain the 90% because of all of the work that they had to do and the incredible heavy lift that they had to make in order to make this property basically get reactivated or be able to get reactivated. So this evening, we're not, you know, we're not selling anything this evening. That would have to happen, you know, by ordinance regardless. But this sets up the framework for moving that forward, you know, for the if and the when, so.
How many actual solar panels are going to be in there?
Couldn't tell you. I couldn't tell you.
I live by there, so.
Yeah. I know that the Consumers Energy Community Solar Garden Farm, that they're planning for Cadillac, is not as big as the couple that they already have in the state of Michigan, but it's going to certainly look like they're filling, you know, filling a lot of that space up.
Oh, it's a great idea.
But I couldn't tell you.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
Best use of that space.
Much better.
Yeah, we're really excited for it.
Right, than a pile, a pile of charred debris.
In fact, Councilmember, just, that's a great reminder for you to mention. The city is holding onto that property. So through a license agreement or easement-type agreement that'll ultimately come back for council consideration with consumers, we're not, you know, we're still going to hold onto that acreage. So the acreage that's wrapped up within the agreement that you're considering tonight is only the acreage that's in the middle, the approximately 8.4 acres.
I love that this is moving forward.
Yep.
Makes me happy.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the agreement between the city of Cadillac and the Cadillac Industrial Fund regarding the Mitchell Bentley property.
Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenboth.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Focas.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, and this evening, we get to hear the State of the City, presented by...
Mike?
Marcus. Mike didn't know. Strong.
Yes.
Good.
I accept that.
Is that, is that the right one?
Those are some bright colors.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, no. I think we're okay. All right. Well, again, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council for affording me this opportunity to present the State of the City. This, are we taking bets?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, oh goodness. So this presentation follows the same format that I've given the last couple of years. I will say that while a lot of the numbers in the beginning are going to look familiar, it'll be sort of the last time you'll see these numbers because it's because they're based on the 2010 census. So as soon as we have numbers for the 2020 census, we'll obviously have them updated. So the first few slides, and I'm going to breeze through some of this just in the interest of time, include our mission and vision statements, the city goals, community development enforcement, public safety, economic health and development, customer service and organizational enhancement. Our goals that we reviewed earlier this evening, these are all available online, these are all within our budget document. And certainly, should these change, then obviously we'll report out differently. Under the goals, we have priority statements. Again, these are all available online, and the next several slides will show what those priority statements are. So as a, for instance, under community development, you know, it's to promote, you know, a positive image. It's to advance the quality of life, maintain and improve, you know, civic infrastructure, and improve public facilities and equipment, maintain and improve environmental infrastructure. And these, you know, these priority programs are established intentionally to be broad enough to capture the spirit of everything that we try to accomplish here within our organization and within our community. As you go through the budget document, once you get through the various priority programs, as they're listed under the goals, you then actually get to the priority programs. And those are the more specific tasks and initiatives that all feed into these main categories. And I would encourage folks that are interested at home, or whether you guys want to review them as well, certainly you could see them on the current budget document that's listed on our website, which is www.cadillac-mi.net. And I'm just going to skip to our next section. So these are the tables that I refer to that are using data from the last census, you know, urban density. You know, it looks at the city and then the four surrounding townships. And I really think that this is good information to look at because it talks about, in this specific site, you know, our table, how many people live in the city and what the housing density units are per square mile. So, you know, in Cadillac, you know, there's approximately 1,400 people that live in every square mile of our city and approximately 668 housing units. If you look at the very next highest one that's hearing township, it's 98 people per square mile with 43 housing units. And I'd like to spend a second on that just because it helps establish how while we all live in the same neighborhood, in a sense, in the same region, in the same area, we're responsible for very different things. And the level of service that we have to provide as a city and the type of service that we provide is very different than what even the very surrounding townships have to provide right around us. You know, likewise, the Cadillac is the population center, the city's the population center, and during the day, you know, that population goes up about 65%. The next chart shows some of the primary employers and work categories that we have, manufacturing and industrial, lodging, food and service, healthcare, social services, construction services, and retail trade. In fact, per the census, I should say, you know, Cadillac's retail trade area serves about 60,000-plus people and encompasses approximately a 25-mile radius, which is interesting. So basically, what that means is that if you're within 25 miles of the city, you are more likely to come and get your services, your shopping, your dining, your entertainment, whatever it may be, from the city versus going to another city. If you're outside of that 25-mile radius, then there's a better likelihood you're getting those services from somewhere else. Our organizational snapshot, currently, we're, you know, we sort of fluctuate between 70 to 75 positions, sort of depending on the day, but as this chart's been updated, it's 72 positions. You know, we're responsible, obviously, for all of our public meetings and elections, processing of taxes and receipts. We do, you know, 41,000 receipts annually valued at over $20 million. We maintain nearly 88 miles of streets, 51 miles of sewer mains, 74 miles of water mains. And, you know, in terms of some other fun facts, as I call them, over 2,500 calls for fire service. We've had, you know, over 1,800 crimes that were investigated and over 2,000 police department service calls, along with over 800 arrests. It's important to understand that, especially with the fire service number, we have not had 2,500 fires. In fact, a majority of those numbers are all related to emergency medical calls for help, not my house is burning down, so. You know, taking a deeper dive, we are still in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program process with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We're now 88% complete. The couple of major items that are still out there that we have to complete in order to get ourselves certified include some major zoning updates to the zoning code that the state is requiring us to do. We are almost done with that process, and we'll be bringing that forward as a part of the normal course of work for consideration. And then I believe we'll be celebrating, hopefully before the end of this year, our certification. Speaking of which, and I'm going to just go back. If you look at the map, this is one of the maps that we recently did identifying the marijuana-related zones that was approved just not that long ago. And then the next couple of slides talk about, you know, the zoning ordinance update that we're doing and the reasons for doing it. As you'll see, the last one, improved clarity and user-friendliness of the document for Public Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, City Council and staff. But really, you know, it all fits under the sort of umbrella of being redevelopment-ready. And communities that are redevelopment-ready are able to stand up, in a sense, say with a straight face, you know, that the process is easy for everybody, not just, you know, your professionals or your elected and appointed officials, but for those people that want to come to the community to conduct business here, that want to develop here, that want to expand here, you know, we would have a process in place and essentially, think of it like an accreditation process, we would have that in place that would allow for those types of activities to happen easier. Moving right along, the master plan is also something that we're working on at the same time that we're working on the zoning updates. It's been nearly five years since the adoption of our current one, and it's really something that should be reviewed and renewed every five years. And so again, it's all, you know, sort of in the same ecosystem with each other, hand in hand, we'll be bringing that forward as well. Place plans progress, this is something that certainly we're really, really proud of. As everybody knows, we've completed, you know, the initial, or I shouldn't say initial, but the main Phase Two of the Rotary Pavilion project. It's what everyone has been enjoying now for the last couple of years. The original place plans document indicated and showed renderings of having a dock off the back and new, excuse me, new boat docks off the back and like a pier or a place for people to congregate. And so, you know, if you look at a Phase Three and a 3B, as a, for instance, that just shows, these are updated imagery, but it just shows some of those conversations that are still out there. It shows them in a visual. This shows the walkway that was originally talked about that would go behind the pavilion so that people could still use the pathways without interrupting performances or activities that are happening on the site. And then the next one shows the new public dock area, a city pier. It shows a gazebo. Understand that all of this is just, it's just a conceptual rendering. Doesn't mean that there will ever be another dock, doesn't mean there'll be a gazebo, it's just a picture to show, you know, what's possible. And as with the other place planning projects or areas, you know, it would certainly require a grassroots effort to kind of get off the ground. There isn't a funding source, you know, identified as of today that will get the project off. Place plans, again, the plaza in Cadillac Commons, as we all know, that's completed. The market, this shows one of the market activities that happened earlier this summer. We've been proud to say that we've hosted both public and private events, even a wedding, used the facility with success, actually, this fall. So that was really neat to see happen out there. The Trailhead is the sort of final project. Council mayor may not recall, we received DNR Trust Fund grant dollars for this project. We are planning to have a bid this year, and if all goes well, hopefully, we'll start construction on it later this year. Cadillac West, the study project was completed. This is a copy of that that was done by the Alliance for Economic Success and their engineering consultant, looking at downtown redevelopment. The Cobb's and Mitchell Building received a Historic Preservation Award from the State Historic Preservation Office and the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, was one of the few projects that was awarded the Governor's Award for historic preservation. So while it's not a public building, we're certainly proud that we were a part of that project initially. Cadillac Lofts, as I believe everybody has seen, is well underway in terms of Phase One. Phase One is Building One. Building One is the building that's on the left side of the image, the one that would be on the north corner of the screen. Just as a reminder, the project includes two four-story mixed-use buildings, approximately 84 apartment units, approximately 18,000 square feet of commercial space. And, you know, it's somewhere between a $10 to $20 million investment in the downtown. In fact, here's a status, sort of current status update picture. There's actually masonry work happening on the exterior as well as painting and other interior finishings happening right now at the... happening right now at the same time. So it's really exciting to see this project come to fruition. One of the main components of this project that this council is going to be discussing at some point, either later this winter or early spring, is going to be the public infrastructure, required public infrastructure improvements that still have to be made around the project area, Shelby Street, Chapin Street, Cass, and possibly part of Mitchell. And that's all tied to the community development block grant funding that we're still seeking to get for part of it and possibly utilizing other funding such as bonds to pay for another part of it. Cadillac Brewery, that's the former Better Bodies Building. It's 412 South Mitchell Street. This is a rendering of that spot that was provided to us. We didn't make this one. The building on the right is already underway and being transformed into pretty much what you see on, on the screen. The other two buildings are not yet placed yet, but we are anticipating that there'll be an opening sometime later this year, possibly summer or fall. The Raven is still, you know, our newest, you know, downtown-based restaurant with live entertainment. They, I believe, are still working on, on doing something upstairs. We don't know exactly what that'll be, but we do believe it'll either be a continuation of the restaurant or possibly a different theme-type restaurant on the upstairs spot that they have that has the balcony. The city is also sort of completely switching gears here, secured a hundred thousand dollar grant through the state of Michigan through their site readiness program. This is to extend Weigl Street out to Thirteenth Street. And the, you know, the importance of this, and I'll point to this map here behind our mayor, is that by extending that roadway out, it'll help to activate the remaining industrial parcels that are not yet developed. This is the Potvin Industrial Park. And so, this, this grant's going to fund a lot of the work that has to get done to help with the remaining of that project. So we're really excited that we were selected and, you know, hopefully this will help inch us closer to being able to have additional industrial property ready for, for development purposes. Moving over into the police department. See if I can, oh, good. Thank you for the zoom-in. So the green indicate crimes investigated, the blue indicates service calls reported, and the yellow indicates arrests that were made. The green and the blue are separate incidents. So if you're looking at, you know, total numbers, you'd have to add those two up. They're not one in the same. As you can see, as this tracks from two thousand fifteen through two thousand nineteen, except for two thousand eighteen in terms of the service calls that came in, the, it's relatively flat. It actually looks like it went down a little bit over this past year, but, but just generally speaking, the numbers are pretty flat. In terms of the Michigan Incident Crime Reporting System, it looks at property crime, violent crime, and crimes per thousand. The property crime numbers, again, looking at a, a few-year period, sorry, I have to look this way because the flag is covering part of the numbers here. The numbers, again, are a little flat, other than under the larceny category, where it went up from one sixty-two to three oh five. And I am going to make an assumption that a lot of that had to do with some of the vehicle thefts that we had, but I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent on that. Looking at violent crime, we are, again, somewhat flat. In fact, we went down a little bit under robbery and aggravated assault to a total of fifty-six from sixty-four where we were last year. You know, it's, it's, obviously, you don't want to see any of these numbers at all. Most of these are all domestic-type-related incidents that have occurred, which, in a manner of speaking, while it's not good, it is also not showing you that we have, you know, stranger danger, in a sense, where there are people that are unknown coming in and knocking your door down and doing, you know, doing god knows what. So it's not, it's not a good thing, but it's, it's mostly domestic-related. Crimes per thousand, as you can see, violent crimes per thousand also went down a little bit, was at six-point thirteen. Now it's at five-point three-six. Property crimes went up, went from twenty-one point ninety-two to thirty-six point sixty-seven. And again, I think a lot of this is related to the rash of vehicle break-ins where, in a lot of cases, folks left their cars unlocked and there were a group of people running around town over the summer, snatching and grabbing. So... But as you can see, the numbers, generally speaking, aside for that one off, if you will, are, are still pretty flat. Community partnerships were certainly very involved with the community. We have a school resource officer with CAPS, the Cadillac Area Public Schools. We received contributions from area businesses for our special emergency response and rescue vehicle, which you'll actually see a picture of that in a second. We're still involved with the Lincoln Area Neighborhood Watch and with Oasis. In two thousand nineteen, also, the second year of our drug program, where you can deposit, no questions asked, the box is right outside our front door. We took in over sixty pounds of prescription drugs, not including, you know, container weight and whatever container that they were deposited in. So that's, that's an interesting number as well. Community outreach, certainly, we're out there. We want to be seen. We want to be visible. We want to be involved and engaged. You know, kids and Halloween candy, we're out there on Halloween, every Halloween, rain or shine, cold or warm, meeting and greeting with kids and also passing out candy. We take place with, we take place in Meyer's shop with a cop program as well as Walmart's shop with a hero program, which is also inclusive of the fire department, very similar in nature. We're also involved with Northern Michigan Mutual Aid. That's the organization that I mentioned during our work session earlier this evening. The city has officers that are specially trained to respond. Likewise, if we have an issue in Cadillac, officers from other areas will come to Cadillac to respond. And the special emergency rescue and response vehicle, which is pictured here, the top photo is the before, and the bottom photo is the after, after we had it essentially operationally made ready with, with new paint and lighting and whatnot through the donations. This may be out as a part of that response, pending what the call is and, and whether it needs, needs to go, whether it's here in Cadillac or within the region that we participate in all the mutual aid. As a, as a sort of FYI, next door to that is an antique fire truck. I believe it's a Mack fire truck, one of only a handful that are left in the country, and happens to be one that Cadillac had in service a long time ago. Was it nineteen thirties or forties? Do you have any idea?
I don't know.
You don't know? Oh, it's okay. But it's old. So it's been a, been a project in the background for quite a while. Under the fire department, as council mayor may not recall, we're in the process of having our first new pumper truck being put together. So that image in and of itself actually is the image of what we're getting. That's the schematic of it. Fire incidents, we had forty-seven fires, one injury, zero fatalities. So if you recall, a couple of minutes ago, you saw there were thousands of fire calls. Remember what I said? Most of them are not for fires. So, you know, this, this picture here really proves that. Other incidents, as I mentioned, over twenty-five hundred calls for service. Two thousand of them were for emergency medical. Fifty-nine of them were for hazardous conditions, one hundred and thirty-seven service calls, good intention calls, one hundred and sixty-four, and about sixty-seven false alarms. Some highlights, we have new air packs that are in service, as you guys awarded today, by the way, which will show up in next year's presentation, will be the AEDs, smoke detector and carbon monoxide installation, over a hundred and twenty units in both Cadillac and Clam Lake Township. Clam Lake Township receives Cadillac Fire Department services. We treat them as if they're just simply a part of the city through an agreement that we have in place with them. And obviously, the water rescue vehicle became fully operational last, last summer as well. Just some personnel stats, over twenty-four hundred hours of training equals to about ten hours per firefighter a month. And obviously, we, we host multiple training courses, including Fire Academy, Marine Operations, and Investigation Services. Just like police, we're involved in the community. We have outreach. These are just some general stats about how many people that we've reached directly. Likewise, some of the, some of the activities coming out of the fire marshal's office, including a number of commercial fire inspections and plan reviews and other investigations that that, that officer has been responsible for. Moving along, that, that officer is also overseeing, or that, that division of the fire department oversees our contract with Associated Government Services. Associated Government Services is the Building Inspection Services Division of the city. And so they've, they've issued, you know, almost four hundred and seventy-five permits over the last year that equals about a hundred thousand dollars that were billed. Permit cost is about a hundred and ninety dollars each, if you, if you just do the math. And we've also done three hundred, you know, rental inspections. So it's a little blending of two different separate programs, but just as a reminder, the fire department also conducts the rental housing inspection program for the city. Public Works, obviously, snow plowing, snow hauling is a major, major issue, one that we're currently dealing with. We've spent, you know, fifty-seven hundred hours on snow-related activities. We had removal of snow equalling over thirty-seven hundred hours. And, and look, I only have like another thousand hours doing this. So, you know, we're, we're getting there. We're getting close. We've applied, you know, fifteen hundred tons of salt, six hundred and fifty tons of a salt-sand mix, and we had almost a hundred and eighteen inches of snow last year, which, you know, I don't know how anybody here feels, but I thought that last year was relatively light in terms of snowfall. But it was actually, you know, a foot and a half more than what, what we had before last year. So it was not, only not as light, but it was heavier. The next slide talks about the plow trucks that we have, talks about the number of streets that we, you know, that we are responsible to take care of, which, again, these are impressive numbers. And you think of the community only being, you know, about nine square miles, but responsible for, you know, here are sixty-three miles of city streets plus twenty-five miles of, you know, of M-dot roads. And again, we've been replacing now in a, in a really good clip, the number of plow trucks that we have. We spent about twenty-five hundred hours in forestry-related activity as well, taking a focus at the cemetery. Thirty-seven trees and stumps were removed from Maple Hill since the beginning of two thousand nineteen. We are moving towards a zero-turn-type blower that we just recently purchased now, I believe over the last month. And we believe that that'll also help us with our efficiency in maintaining that facility. And there's a picture of, of what that unit looks like. Events, Public Works still participates in the annual Public Works Association North Branch Equipment Show. We hosted that. We also participate in the annual Snow Rodeo, and I think someone might be on the board. It's in this picture here.
Took fifth place.
Yeah, took fifth place. Celebrity contestant in this snow rodeo is our own mayor, Carla Philkins. They took, took advantage of driving. Almost done, moving into utilities, water system, water meters. We replaced a hundred and five of our meters. We changed out a hundred and nine of them. This is a picture of what, of what a typical one looks like. Again, just looking at the numbers, maintaining over seventy-three miles of water mains. Only had a couple of main breaks in two thousand nineteen. We did replace a water main between Lakeshore and Sunset, and we used a directional boring system to do that. Just a, an image, you know, of what, what the break looks like in doing the repair. Some of the equipment, valve turner was purchased in eighteen. We have over a thousand of them that are maintained by the city. We cleaned and exercised about a hundred and fifty of them. And when, when a valve is turned, it's turned twelve to sixty rotations, depending upon its size. And again, just some imagery of the equipment. Under wastewater, focusing on PFOs in wastewater, knowing that this has been, you know, an area that has been talked about by the community, by the media, by the city. Our first sample collected in November of two thousand eighteen, our PFOs level was six-point-six, and at the time, the state's limit was twelve parts per trillion, so we were well under. Additionally, our PFOA limit was at twenty parts per trillion versus the state's limit, which was twelve thousand parts per tril- parts per trillion. Latest samples that we have that were collected in two thousand nineteen, our PFOs level was at two-point-two. The state's revised limits are sixteen. So we are, again, well, well under the limitation or the maximum. And for PFOA, our limit is at three-point-three. So as you could see, went significantly down also, just like the PFOs stat went significantly down, as did the state's limit, went from twelve thousand to eight. But we're still well under that as well. So...
Is that because of not getting the, the water from...
Land, the leachate?
Leachate.
Possibly. But it's really hard to, to be able to pinpoint and say specifically.
Where it comes from.
Yeah. I'm sure it has had a positive impact on it. Picture of wastewater affluent. So after wastewater comes in, clean water goes out, and this is just an image that, that shows that, shows the clean water going out.
Thank you.
Yes. Again, maintaining fifty-one miles of sewer, and of those fifty-one miles of sewer, we cleaned about thirty-seven thousand of them last year. They also did a major driveway paving project at the plant. Talking about other things that the plant does, brought in nearly a hundred thousand dollars in revenue in testing, over seventeen thousand samples. The plant or the department is responsible for the collaborative Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. It's a picture of the last one. This is something that we do in collaboration with the county. In May, we collected over thirteen and a half thousand pounds of waste, and in October, we had over eleven and a half thousand pounds of waste. So it's, it's diverting waste that otherwise would end up in a landfill somewhere, from ending up in a landfill. So it's, it's proving to be a successful program. And, you know, also, community, you know, every department is engaging in the community, right? So, you know, the splash pad, the ice tree. So unfortunately, this year, it collapsed. It collapsed because we didn't really have the weather on our side. But we are looking at rebuilding it next year and perhaps in an alternative location as well. The splash pad, as I mentioned, is another pride and joy of the department, and just a couple of pictures of it, one during the daytime and then, then two at nighttime. Just to remind everybody, we did win the Michigan Best Tasting Water Award. We did also then, because we won the Michigan's Best Tasting Water Award, we competed nationally in two thousand nineteen, and we finished in the top five of all waters in the country. And it has nothing to do with, you know, with size of, you know, of your department or your community. It, it's just the taste of the water. So...
Cheers.
So cheers, yes. Just some employment stats briefly. This shows- Just some employment stats briefly. This shows, you know, how we are a union shop. Currently, we're at 72 people. We have four bargaining units that we work with currently. And it shows the split between non-union and then union staff and what bargaining unit that they're a part of. COME is the Command Officers Association of Michigan. That's a police union. POOM is the Police Officers Association of Michigan, again, another police union. IAFF International Association of Firefighters, and Steel Workers is both Public Works and Utilities. Looking at our average compensation, let me go back, for union versus non-union. Again, these are just some fun facts that I like to show every year. So the blue is the union employees through Act 345. So Act 345 covers our police and firefighters. MERS, which is the Michigan Employee Retirement System, covers the non-union group and the utilities-public works group. So as you could see, the blue is a little above the red, blue being the police and fire. The average pension of a retired police and firefighter is just under $26,000 a year. The average, you know, annual pension of a retired non-union worker or public works slash utilities worker is right around $13,500 a year. And so I know that there's a lot of discussion that happens all the time about the state of finances and the state of Michigan, and public employee pensions and that whole system, and that they're really outrageous. But I think Cadillac does a really good job in keeping it, you know, sort of very controlled. We're very conservative, and I think the proof of that is really within this one bar chart that shows that. Some other miscellaneous stats include, if I can see it from here, the average number of employees we have monthly, the... Their average age, our average age is almost 44 years old. People have been here, on average, about 10 and a half years. And then the number of promotions we had last year were five. Employee distribution, again, another really kind of interesting chart between union and non-union. Within the union ranks, it's 98% men. Within the non-union ranks, it's almost an even 50/50 between men and union, or men and union, men and women. Annual turnover is about 11%. Of that 11%, 4% is due to retirement, 7% were due to resignations. And that split is as follows. We had, over the last year, four police officers that have moved on to other opportunities, along with a maintenance operator, too. Under retirements, we had our park superintendent retire, and we had two fire captains that retired. Last, but certainly not least, fiscal health and looking ahead. Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for 34 years. That is a stat that while you may think that every organization that applies to the government Finance Officers Association of America gets is not true, and we've been getting it now for the last 34 years, both in our budget and in our comprehensive annual financial report, we've been receiving that award. They're an indication of our longstanding commitment to excellence in developing thorough and understandable financial documents. Outside funding, this stat was higher last year, but that's because years are coming off of the chart, and we have to continue to update the chart. And certainly, we're continuing to look for more outside funding. But over the last seven years, if you were to average that, bringing in over $100,000. Looking at, you know, general fund reserves, again, total unassigned amount of about 19%. The GFOA guideline is less than that. It's about 15%. And so we are strong fiscally. Again, you know, looking at unfunded liabilities, and I know that you just went through a lot of this with your auditor, but we are also really doing well, especially as compared to other municipalities in the state of Michigan. Our pension and retirement fund for Act 345 employees is funded at 83%. And our non-union, along with the Public Works Union, Steel Workers Union, is at 76%, which are, again, very strong numbers. And the final slide of the evening, the sort of to-do list, but looking ahead, you know, we're always trying to look ahead. You know, some of these are certainly holdovers from last year's, and will likely still be on next year's as well. But, you know, completing Cadillac Commons, improvements to both our west and our east corridors, downtown redevelopment is huge. You know, marijuana is huge, as we just jumped into that. Looking at parking and streetscape improvements is a sort of ongoing conversation that's happening. And certainly, you know, industrial retention and growth initiatives. As we look back at what the council just did this evening in terms of that agreement with the Cadillac Industrial Fund, you know, that is gonna help us either, you know, grow something locally that's already here, or bring somebody in that's not already here. You know, it's all about the community collaboration, and it's about trying to keep Cadillac, you know, sustainable and frankly, keep Cadillac growing. So, really appreciate this time and here all night.
Thank you. We're not.
Yeah, I know.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, this evening, we do have in our packet the minutes from the last Downtown Development Authority that we could read through. And at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. Rules same as the first. Seeing no one that wants to talk to us this evening, we'll close public comment, and we'll move to good of the order for this evening. Does anyone have anything?
I do. This last, excuse me, this last Saturday, the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council sponsored the first annual family skating event at the, down at the skate park. And thanks to Mr. Roberts, who came down and braved the gale-force winds. It was cold. And so several families came, but it wasn't, you know, a big, huge crowd scene. And it was, people didn't stay the whole time. It was quite cold. The wind was coming off like... But it was fun, and I just, you know, projects like that, that the youth council do for the community, really make us a good place. Speaking of that, this Wednesday, at 4:00 PM, the youth council will meet here in the council chambers. And I believe we're going to be interviewing a couple of new members that are wanting to join, so...
I've got a couple of short things. Recently, two employers from the city have retired, and I'd like to congratulate and thank Camille Lipke and Ruth Jacob for their years of hard work and dedication to the city. And also with the retirements, I've been informed that an employee will be moved part-time to fill the old ordinance enforcement officer post that was previously held by Pam Cliffman. She had retired. The duties had been given to the city police. And the police are probably overburdened already with the things they have to take care of, the substance abuse. And it's good we've got somebody in there looking at the blight in town, because I came up a couple times with the people when I went door-to-door, and Pam Cliffman was missed. She did a great job. And I'm sure the person they put in for ordinance control is gonna do a great job, too. But, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
One last thing. March 2nd, 5:40 PM, if you can arrive then, we're gonna do a picture of the council.
Okay. I'm gonna send that out.
Sure.
Yeah, everybody go send us an email, please.
I was gonna write it down, but I knew these guys would need an email, so...
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.